All right, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order our Thursday, October 4th, meeting of the Missoula County Board of County Commissioners. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I'd like to begin today by the reading of a proclamation. Whereas Missoula County recognizes the second Monday in October is a legal holiday pursuant to Montana Code Annotated 1-1-216. And whereas this proclamation recognizes that Missoula County is located within the homelands of the Salish and Pondure Nations. And whereas this proclamation recognizes and values the contributions to Missoula County and our society made by indigenous peoples and cultures, including technology, thought, theory, and process, as well as the magnificent environment that they have protected and nurtured for millennia. And whereas this proclamation recognizes that the county of Missoula has the responsibility to oppose institutional and systemic racism toward indigenous peoples, which contributes to high rates of poverty and disproportionate health, educational, and social issues. And whereas this proclamation recognizes that indigenous peoples have suffered from historical injuries or injustices, including colonization and dispossession of lands and resources. Now therefore, in coordination with other government entities, organizations, and public institutions, Missoula County recognizes the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. And perhaps we could transmit this to the TSKT Tribal Council, if that seems appropriate? Okay. Are there any other public announcements at this time? Seeing none, and I think all of you hopefully have an agenda. If you don't, I think there are some on the back table. We have three action items today, three public hearings. Is there any public comment on items not listed on today's agenda? This is your opportunity to speak to anything else that's on your mind, hopefully relevant to Missoula County? Okay. Seeing none, and I should just give a reminder to folks, for the courtesy of all in attendance, if you could make sure your cellphones are silenced, and please be sure to sign in at the back table if you have not done so already, you can do that as you exit. So, our current claims list, this particular week, received as of September 19th to September 26th by the Commissioner's Office total $2,112,048.74. And as I've mentioned times previously, if you're interested in drilling down into the specifics of what those claims are, go to the electronic version of our agenda online, and you can click on the claims list and find what items add up to that $2-plus million. So, we have three public hearings today. We'll begin each public hearing with a staff report, followed by comments from applicants or the applicant's representative, and then have public comment, and then there will be discussion and debate among the commissioners. So, we begin today by opening a public hearing on the Dunlap family transfer. And I believe we have a staff report from Lauren Miller.
Thanks, Commissioners. Lauren Miller, Planner with Community and Planning Services. This request today is by Gina Dunlap, who wishes to create and transfer one tract of land to her husband. The property is located south of the Y area and west of Deshaulane. The current lot is approximately 40 acres in size. There are two existing single-family residences on the property and a number of outbuildings. Gina Dunlap and the recipient are listed as one of the owners of one of these existing mobile homes on the property currently. The property is Zoned CA3, which is an agricultural and residential zoning district. The residential density in this zoning is one dwelling unit per five acres. The proposal today does not exceed that residential density. The request is in compliance with other zoning regulations such as setbacks and minimum lot size. Here's the proposed lot configuration from the applicant. The proposed transfer would result in two total tracts. The transferred tract, which would be approximately 10 acres in size, would be transferred to Gina Dunlap's husband and hold one of the existing single-family residences. The remaining tract, approximately 30 acres in size, would remain under ownership by Gina Dunlap and contain the other existing single-family residents. The applicant has stated in their application that both tracts are to be used for residential purposes. This was sent out to agencies for review, and there were no comments of concern from the proposal. The rebuttable presumptions and general evasion criteria were reviewed in the staff analysis, and those that were triggered were noted in bold in the report. The rebuttable presumptions that were triggered by the proposal was if the landowner intends to divide land for the purpose of a gift or sale to the landowner's spouse and/or minor children. The recipient, as I stated, is the landowner's spouse, Walter Dunlap. The second rebuttable presumption triggered with the application was if the division appears to be made for the purpose of speculation by the landowner or for resale for the benefit of the landowner by using the grantee as a straw person. This may be indicated if the grantor and/or recipient own other tracts of land in Missoula County. Walter Dunlap is listed as an owner of three other tracts of land in Missoula County. The general evasion criteria that were triggered by the proposal was if the original tract has been transferred to the claimant in the past two years. The property was transferred to the claimant in July of 2016. The final general evasion criteria that were triggered was if the exempted tracts are contiguous to other platted lots where common roads are shared, or the exempted tracts share a road with nearby platted lots. The exempted tract does share a common road with the nearby Grass Valley Track Subdivision 1, and the new tract is similar shape to the nearby Lots of Certificate Survey #1150. Staff is recommending that the request by Gina Dunlap to utilize the family transfer to create and transfer one parcel to her husband Walter Dunlap be approved. And I have a few questions for the applicant if they would like to come forward.
And as you come up to the mic, if you could click the little button on the microphone base, should turn green, and beautiful, and please state your name for the record.
Gina Dunlap.
Did you buy the property with the intent of dividing it?
No.
Do you or your transferees intend to transfer the property within the next year?
No.
Have you talked to anyone at the county about going through subdivision review?
No.
Will the property be developed?
I'm not sure.
And will the recipient of the property be residing on the property?
Probably not.
Okay. That concludes my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dunlap, maybe stay up here, just in case, so I don't make you go up and back. Do the Commissioners have any questions for Ms. Dunlap at this point?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Curtis.
Ms. Dunlap, while state law does allow us to approve the gift to your spouse, it always seems odd to us because if you're still together, why are you needing two houses, kind of thing? So, we just like to ask, you know, kind of what your purpose really is here.
To give it to my husband. We've been together for over 30 years. He has helped me significantly, and I wanted to give it to him.
Okay. Because we understand you inherited the property from your father, was it? Okay.
So, I'll just follow up on this, and I don't mean to be overly invasive, but we don't see this too often where spouses would gift a piece of property to the other spouse. Since you're already sharing the land in common, is there anything more that you could elaborate on as to why you would want to gift to your spouse this particular parcel?
Because it's something I can give him. He has his place, I have my place. He lives with me on my place, but it's something I wanted to give to him for all the help he's gave me through the years. When my father was sick, he helped significantly. He's always been there for me.
Okay. Thank you.
Could you go back a couple slides to, yeah, the rebuttable presumptions?
Cola, did you have a question for Ms. Dunlap?
Yeah, I wanted to kind of read this language. And the first sentence kind of is what we talk about a lot, is the purpose is not to provide a means of new building site except for in exceptional circumstances when subdivision review is unnecessary. And it's difficult sometimes to interpret what an exceptional circumstance is, that something should not have to go through subdivision review. And it's particularly concerning when it's a spouse-to-spouse transfer. It always looks like it's an evasion of subdivision. However, unfortunately, that is specifically contemplated in the statute. And so, I would like to hear more about what exceptional circumstance exists that makes this not needing review and not just providing a mean of creating another building site that can be sold and transferred without subdivision.
Well, another building site can be put on the other five acres, whether I go through subdivision review or not. I can put a house on every five acres out there now without subdivision review. So, nothing will be accomplished extra by breaking off 10 acres. It can still have one more house on five acres.
Right, it's just that now you can sell it separately.
This is my family farm. I've lived on there for 40-plus years. I have no intentions of letting it get away. It's not going anywhere when he has it. It's a goodwill gesture on my part.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing, so is there any public comment on this proposed family transfer? Any public comment? Anything further you'd like to say, Ms. Dunlap? Okay. All right. I will close the public hearing. Any additional discussion or a motion from the Commission? Commissioner Curtis.
I would move to approve the request by Gina Dunlap to utilize the family transfer exemption, MC 76-3-207, is that a 1 or an L? 1B, to create and transfer one parcel to her husband Walter as presented in the exemption application.
Second.
Is there further discussion? I guess I would just say, on the face of it, I'm, I guess I'm not convinced that this is not an attempt to evade subdivision review, and a new parcel is being created here that could very likely be sold off, and I have no reason to believe to the contrary that that is not something that would happen. Okay, we've had a motion seconded. Discussion, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Are those opposed? No. Okay. Motion carries. Okay. Our second public hearing, which I will open, is related to an emergency 310 permit application by Hellgate Valley Irrigation Company. We have a staff report from Todd Kleats.
Afternoon, Commissioners. As indicated, this is from the Hellgate Valley Irrigation Company. You typically don't see many 310 issues before you because the Conservation District, Missoula Conservation District, usually handles most of these. But within the city limits of 1946, that is where the County Commissioners do have 310 permitting jurisdiction. Again, this is the area that you do have jurisdiction. And where this is located is actually across from the Allegiance Ogren Field on the river Wright. This is the notice of emergency. The emergency action was taken on August 1st of 2018, and what they did was to do a little bit of dredging to ensure that they could get water to their users. And as authorized under the 310 law of the state of Montana, making sure that irrigators are able to get their water is a form of an emergency action that can be taken. And that is exactly what this is saying under 16A, that they have to notify the Board within writing within 15 days of the action taken, and they did do that. Hate to dredge up past practices here, but there was a violation, 310 violation in 2016 regarding the placement of Jersey barriers within the stream channel. When they first contacted me about this emergency action this year, they initially wanted to reset these Jersey barriers, and I reminded them that they were still under violation for placing these Jersey barriers, and advised them to, rather than reset these Jersey barriers that already were in violation, is to do what basically happens throughout Missoula County, which is to dredge up the intake and form a natural diversion with river cobbles. And that is exactly what they did. On the left, you can see what it looked like before their action was taken. And on the right, you can see the pushed-up gravel cobble that was placed within the channel. You can still see off in the distance there that the Jersey barriers were left in place. This is more along the north side of the island that's there. You can see where they pushed up some of that dredged materials and let it dry on the island, the city's island there. As required under the 310 law, your 310 team consisting of Fish Wildlife and Parks, Missoula Water Quality District, and myself went out and visited the site. I'd like to read you a few of the comments that Fish Wildlife and Parks had placed on their team member report. And after the fact, inspection was conducted from the irrigation canal head gate upstream to the, for the upstream extent of disturbance at the tip of the island, where gravel was pushed up to enhance water delivery. Gravel and cobble were pushed up and birmed along much of the island upstream of the canal head gate. Vegetation was also disturbed on the island by heavy equipment used to complete the work. Cobble and fill pushed up to enhance flow to the irrigation diversion was consistent with the emergency application submitted and consistent with other major river diversions in the Missoula area. Future uses of the emergency provision in situations like this is not recommended as drops and flow to base flow and river deposition are not unforeseen. Work specifications should be addressed in a longer-term plan of operation for the ditch. Until then, Hellgate Valley should anticipate issues and apply for 310 permits prior to work. Work on the island and in the ditch vicinity damaged quite a bit of riparian vegetation. Routes for equipment access, work areas, and placement of fill should minimize damage to riparian veg. This is a normal component of 310 work. A long-term maintenance plan that spells out permit specifications, expectations, work area limits should be submitted prior to further work being conducted. Placement of concrete and other unauthorized debris was not part of the most recent work, but removal of large amounts of debris and concrete blocks should also be part of long-term maintenance plans for this site. Some Fish Wildlife and Parks from the Water Quality District. The proposed Max Wave project will set a more permanent diversion structure in place, which will lessen the frequency of bringing heavy equipment into the river channel. I recommend Hellgate Valley submit a maintenance plan for maintaining the intake to be reviewed and approved by the county in the interim. Further, I recommend the permanent operations and maintenance for Max Wave address dredging activities so as to reduce sediment loads to the river. Concrete debris should be removed from the channel. Now, I mentioned a few things about Max Wave and the island, and there is a plan by the city to replace a lot of this irrigation diversion with another play wave entitled Max Wave, and that's right at this location. The city, in their application for a permit for Max Wave, does not have to go through the 310 permit with the county. They would go through a 124 permit with Fish Wildlife and Parks. And part of their application to Fish Wildlife and Parks does include maintenance for this site, which would address a lot of these issues. However, Max Wave has not been implemented yet. They have not received permits for the work. And I don't believe they've made formal application until such time that City Council is convinced that that's something that they wanted to. In this letter, they do want to read a little bit. This is from the city. Does our understanding that every year Hellgate Valley performs work within the Clark Fork River in this location without requisite permits, and then applies for emergency 310 permit in the city emergency floodplain after the work is completed? Following the city acquisition of West Broadway Island several years ago, the city Parks and Recreation Department has been attempting to develop a working relationship with Hellgate Valley staff in order to ensure that ditch maintenance occurs in consideration of natural resources, public safety, and future public infrastructure investments on the island. The city has already spent many thousands of dollars controlling weedy vegetation and invasive trees, replanting native riparian vegetation, and managing public access. On multiple occasions, Hellgate Valley's work on the island has damaged decking on the access bridge and destroyed planted material installed by the city. Attempts to have Hellgate Valley repair their damage to the access bridge and requests to Hellgate Valley's ditch rider to notify Missoula Parks and Recreation prior to access so city staff can let Hellgate Valley Irrigation know where plantings have occurred have failed. It is the intent of the city to work cooperatively with Hellgate Valley so that Hellgate Valley can maintain their ditch as needed with the fused amount of impacts to the site. And then they go on to discuss two major projects that they have, including Max's Wave and improvements to the island there. These are the rules in regards to emergency notification. The Board, meaning the Board of County Commissioners, will review the emergency project and affirm, overrule, or modify the individual team member recommendations and notify the applicant and team members of their decision. If the action is approved, no further action is necessary. A person who has undertaken an emergency action that is modified must submit an application to the Board using Form 270, which is a general permit application form, to mitigate possible damages to the stream caused by the emergency action and to achieve a long-term solution to the emergency solution. A person who has, the last option is a person who has undertaken an emergency action that is denied shall submit written notice on Form 270, again, the general permit application, to obtain approval to remove the project to avoid further damages to the stream caused by the emergency action and to achieve a long-term solution. This is one of the county's rules regarding riparian vegetation, that that is supposed to be protected and preserved. And again, streambed vegetation must be protected except for removal is necessary, and then maintained, removal must be kept to a minimum. So, under a general permit, all disturbed areas must be managed during construction and later reclaimed, and again, streambed vegetation must be protected. This is that Form 270 that if you amend their project, they would be required to submit. It's a typical application form. It's not, in this situation, it's not something that they would need to hire an engineering firm to complete for them. The difference between a permit and a maintenance plan, a permit is only valid for one year, where a maintenance plan can be up to 10 years in time. And certainly, if Max's does go forward, Max's then would supersede anything that would happen in this maintenance plan. But if it doesn't go forward, these folks would be covered then for the next 10 years to go in and do what they need to do. So, again, what we're recommending is that the Board actually modifies the emergency project, submitted to the, submit a, of an application and a 10-year maintenance plan. And what we would recommend is that they smooth the in-stream berm after irrigation season. That's those in-stream cobbles and grails that you saw pushed up. The ones that they left on the islands, that those be removed, that they remove the broken concrete and Jersey barriers that were previously placed without authorization, and that they notify us a minimum of five days prior to performing their maintenance. This is similar, with regards to the maintenance plan, this is similar to what the Board approved last year for the Doubletree. And that they would perform their maintenance between July 1st and October 31st, so that when water starts to drop, they can go in there and do their maintenance, and when they no longer need it, they can go back in and smooth out the berm. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions?
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone present from Hellgate Valley Irrigation Company who'd like to speak to this? Okay. Seeing none. This is a public hearing. Is there any public comment on this particular item? Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing. Questions from the Commission or a motion?
I do have a question for Todd. So, the Hellgate Valley Irrigation Company is aware of what the recommendation is from your office?
Yeah, we notified the applicant, who is the ditch rider, and then he couldn't be here today because he is getting a certification done. So, I advised him to make sure that the president, who is of the irrigation company, who was his father, and also one of the primary users, Mike Flynn, was notified of that.
Okay. So, I think this just shows that some of these irrigation companies, of course, have been around for a long time, and they do have all those water rights and things, but the city's kind of grown around them, so they need to be good community partners. So, I think that having this 10-year plan will make them be aware that there shouldn't be a future emergency that happens annually because they know that, you know, they need to get in there at the appropriate times with the appropriate equipment and use the appropriate materials. So, it'll be good to have it all written. So, I would also expect them to keep in mind protecting the river, the fishery, the vegetation on the city's property, and the city does plan to build a future access road, so that should be better. But we don't want any more act first, forgiveness later. This plan allows them to do that instead of having to come in every year. So, I hope they take advantage of it. So, I would, did you have anything you wanted to add first?
I was just going to agree with you.
Okay.
And say, yeah, I mean, this has been an ongoing issue for multiple years, and I think it's being quite gracious of us to just, potentially just move forward in a productive way when indeed there could be consequences for the fact that they have been in violation for multiple years. And so, hopefully, this extends the olive branch, and they come into compliance, and they remain in compliance in the future. I'm sure that message has been shared with them. Thank you.
So, I guess I do have another question then. So, if we do give them the opportunity to do this, and they don't follow through, do we put a timeline with it for, you know, for them to do the application for the permit and to come up with their 10-year plan and to get stuff out? Or then we deny? I mean...
So, how the motion is written is that they would submit the maintenance plan for work that they could do between July 1st and October 31st. So, to get that material out of there by the end of the month, they have to get right after it.
Okay. And we do expect that?
Correct.
Okay.
So, I guess just to follow up on that, there is no, I guess July 1 is essentially the deadline to have the maintenance plan completed by, or?
No, October 31st is when they would have all this submitted to us, and then by October 31st, be able to go back in and smooth out the berm.
Okay. Got it.
And remove the dredged materials and remove the Jersey barriers.
Okay. Thanks.
So, they need the permit with the plan and the action taken by the end of the month?
Correct.
Okay.
Good to know. Okay. Any further questions or a motion?
I would move that we allow the Hellgate Valley Irrigation Company to modify their emergency 310 project subject to a submit a 10-year maintenance plan, smoothing of the in-stream berm constructed during the emergency work, removing the dredged materials from the adjacent island, removing broken concrete Jersey barriers previously placed without authorization, and notifying caps with a minimum of five days prior to performing this work and authorizing vehicle maintenance. That would be in their plan. But the permit, the plan, and the action need to happen before October 31st of this year.
Do we need to specify that in other coming years, the work has to be done between July 1st and October 31st? We might want to have that date in there, too?
Yeah. I think I said that. But that's what I, the 10-year plan needs to incorporate, but July 1st, October 31st.
It is now doubly reinforced in the record.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? I guess I will just reiterate the comments that both Jean and Cola made also. I think the days of asking, or the days of expecting that it's okay or easier to ask for forgiveness than permission are over. And I think this maintenance plan will be a good mechanism to make sure that the work gets done as it should and permission is not being requested after the fact. So, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Thank you, Todd. Okay. And our final public hearing today, which I will open, is... Okay, and our final public hearing today, which I will open, is the Laurent Commercial Park Buildings for Lease or Rent Proposal, and we have a staffer report from Casey Drayton.
Thanks, Commissioners. Casey Drayton here to present the Laurent Commercial Park Buildings for Lease or Rent Review. The applicant for this request is Zepeda Homes. We have Al Zepeda here with us today representing, and representing them is Missoula Engineering, and we have James Sage in attendance as well. This Buildings for Lease or Rent project location is located south of Ridgeway and west of Highway 93 in Lolo, pretty central to Lolo there. As you can see on the map showing to the left, we have about three acres of property that we'll be looking at here for this development. This shot from Google Maps here gives you a little better idea of what we're looking at on the property, is, would be described as the old gravel pit in Lolo. There's a pretty significant slope where the cut is along the sort of back west side of this property. The area down in the bottom is pretty flat, and you can see that on this picture here taken from Ridgeway. There was an old approach off of Ridgeway, as you can see at the left-hand side of the screen here, that is, that location is proposed to be used with this development with a little bit of reconstruction and reconfiguration. The Laurent Commercial Park Buildings for Lease or Rent will consist of seven buildings with 38 units. Just to kind of go over what buildings we're looking at here, we have four proposed single-family Hobbit-style homes. These are homes that'll be built back into the hillside. These will be one-bedroom units, so there'll be four of those. Then we'll have just north of that, two multifamily buildings. They'll each be six-unit, two-bedroom buildings there. To the north of that, we have a proposed multifamily, six-unit, one-bedroom style unit. That was originally proposed in this building as a studio, and the applicant came back with the change throughout the process to a one-bedroom unit. So you can see that's kind of scratched out down at the bottom to change to a one-bedroom. Staff felt that didn't really make any significant modifications to the plan, so we continued the review procedure forward. There'll then be two proposed multifamily buildings with four units each, and then also an eight-unit multifamily building located just south of that. The other structures you see on this site are existing, or not on this site, but on the adjacent site are existing and owned by separate property owners. As mentioned, there'll be a new access off of Ridgeway. This will be the primary access in and out of the property, which leads you down into sort of a pseudo-road and parking area. Think it's, just under 60 parking spaces are proposed for this development. They have indicated some ADA compliant parking spaces, as well as connectivity of sidewalks and crossings. The roads then proposed by the applicant to continue on past the Hobbit Homes, where you'll find tandem parking spaces for each of those units, and then additionally make the turn and run back out to Highway 93. The applicant proposed that to be a gravel run all the way back to 93. It is somewhat existing at this point in time, and they do have an approved approach permit from Montana Department of Transportation. However, as we'll get into the conditions, one of those recommends paving of that segment of road. Staff feels that it will be utilized by property owners, especially those making a right-hand turn onto Highway 93, and air quality regulations require it. So, just a quick overview of what these buildings will look like. At the top of the screen here, you can see the Hobbit Homes that are proposed in the architectural elevation, as well as the fourplex units down below. And at the top left, we have the eightplex unit elevations, and below that, we have the two-bedroom, sixplex elevations. And then finally, we have the one-bedroom, sixplex elevations. So, you can see on some of these that they will be kind of built into the hillsides out there. There is some topography associated with the site that the applicant's proposing to work with, and that relates to some of the conditions of approval as well. You can see on this shot here, there is some of those contours you can see crossing through the units there. They will be kind of cut back into the hillside that wraps around sort of the core area of this development. So looking at criteria for Buildings for Lease or Rent Review, we have them listed there on the right-hand side at the top of the screen. Staff's looked and found that the application complies with the regulations. Buildings for Lease or Rent Regulations have a number of exemptions that are listed in them. This project is not exempt from Buildings for Lease or Rent Review. Buildings for Lease or Rent Review, just for a brief background, is applicable to unzoned property in Missoula County. Generally speaking, it's any time you're going to have more than three buildings or units on any property that'll be used for lease or rental purposes. Things like agricultural buildings are exempt, or buildings that'll be used solely by the property owner. They can sign an affidavit basically stating that they're the only ones using it, and those could be exempt from this review. However, in this case, the applicant intends to rent the units out, so it does subject it to Buildings for Lease or Rent Review. All of the units will be owned by one individual, which is why we're not looking at a subdivision review per se, contemplating condominiums or something to that effect. So all the units will be owned by one person at this point in time. We find that the proposal avoids or minimizes potential significant impacts to the physical environment, as well as the human population in the area. There are a handful of findings in the staff report that really drill down on what some of those impacts are and how this proposal mitigates them. In addition to the findings, there are several conditions related to this, some of those being a grading and drainage plan, as well as a geotechnical analysis for the homes on the slope for the physical environment. When we look more into the human population impacts, we do touch a little bit on the findings on growth policy compliance. Staff has found, in a little bit of a roundabout way, that this project does comply with comprehensive plan and the growth policy applicable, although, although those aren't specific review criteria, we have addressed them in the staff report. And then some other human population impacts, staff's recommended a handful of conditions relating to the walkways and trails, and those also stem from comments received from Missoula County Parks Trails and Open Lands that are supporting some of those non-motorized connections within the site and further out to the highway to access the trail that's existing out there. In addition to that, the development will have adequate water, wastewater and solid waste facilities. This development will connect to Lolo Water and Sewer District. Those connections have been contemplated and addressed with Lolo Water and Sewer. Main extensions would be required for it, and they've been going through the necessary permit processes with Department of Transportation for encroachment permits, and Republic Services will provide solid waste collection to the site. And looking into adequate access to the site, Ridgeway, the primary access here is going to be a county-maintained collector road which intersects with Highway 93, approximately 350 feet to the east of the proposed property. There is a signal there to help out with the traffic flow. The secondary access, as mentioned, is proposed by the applicant to be a gravel access out to the highway. Staff's recommending a condition that that be paved. That's in accordance with comments received from the Air Quality Division of the Health Department, and Montana Department of Transportation has approved an approach permit out there at Highway 93. Looking at emergency services, this property is located in Missoula Rural Fire District. Fire protection is provided via an existing fire hydrant on Ridgeway and a proposed hydrant within the development. That location was reviewed by Missoula Rural Fire, and everything looks good for the most part on that front. Rural Fire did review the access as well. Certainly having two ways in and out of this is a, is a big benefit there. The applicant did provide in the application some diagrams which show the turning radius of the fire trucks within that development to make sure that they can get into and close to all the buildings proposed. Rural Fire also noticed that residential fire sprinklers are going to be required for anything over a fourplex here, so that's recommended as a condition of approval. This property is not located within any designated or FEMA-mapped floodplain, so it does comply with floodplain regulations. And in conclusion, staff's recommending that the Laurent Commercial Park Buildings for Lease or Rent project be approved with the motion at the bottom of the screen. As noted during the update with you all on Monday, there were four conditions that the applicant, the developer and his representative, had kind of noted as a little bit of concern, and I met with both of them on Wednesday morning, yesterday morning, to go over each of these. And I think we came to sort of what the developers' recommended path forward would be on each of these, that they had some concern over. And really, the only one that I think we left off with that the developer was really recommending or wanting to have changed was condition number three. And instead of basically saying that the gravel drive connecting to 93 shall be paved, they'd rather have it, say, surfaced in accordance with Health Department, Air Quality Division regulations. That would be if there was some way in which the Air Quality Division could let them around that paving requirement, or some sort of a delay in that paving requirement, then we wouldn't necessarily be saying that it needs to be paved right off the bat. So it turns it more over to air quality regulations as opposed to a condition which says, no, it has to be paved at this moment. We talked about the five-foot-wide gravel path. The applicant was a little concerned about legal access for gravel trail in addition to the roadway through the private access easement which goes out to Highway 93. Community and Planning Services staff felt that if vehicular access was allowed through the private access easement, it's probably likely that pedestrian access would be as well, and the developer and representative didn't have any firm information to say otherwise. So unless they've brought that with them today, staff is going to stand behind that recommendation. It's for a gravel trail. The basis behind the gravel trail was that they are contemplating further development on the remainder of the property at some point in time, and we didn't want to pump in too much infrastructure that may receive kind of light or moderate use, especially for foot, pedestrian traffic. Condition number seven, the applicant had brought up, that, the condition reads that Public Works would be reviewing for DEQ-8 regulations for grading and drainage and compliance with the Public Works manual. It's believed that Public Works is really probably only reviewing for the requirements in the Public Works manual and not necessarily DEQ regulations, which are usually reviewed by DEQ. So the applicant was at one point contemplating removing the DEQ reference, however, it seems like the timeline may let them. Submit a plan which complies with all regulations. They'd have to do it down the road if they were going to do further subdivision-type development on this property, so I'll let them speak to how they feel about that condition here today. They were going to talk about that a little more amongst themselves. And condition number nine, I went over with them. We didn't feel that that was any sort of a concern. That's really a condition requiring just kind of standard covenant-type language or development agreement language for no parking along the access roads, due to the wits that they're proposing to ensure that there's, you know, adequate room for traffic flow and fire apparatus access. The road should be no parking, so that puts sort of the enforcement provisions in place to take care of that. So that concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, before we go on to the applicant or applicant's representative, just a point of clarification. On condition number three, did the issue of possibly gating a section of the access road come up in your, your further discussions?
You know, we talked about it a little bit, and I think the applicant would like to have that access open for residents of this development to use, and I think staff feels that that's also the best way. We don't necessarily know what the Missoula Rural Fire would like to see in terms of gating, and, you know, with just meeting yesterday, we didn't have a whole lot of time to talk about it, but we left it at the fact that the developer wants that access to be utilized, so.
Okay, thank you. With the applicant or applicant's representative, want to come on up and share with us whatever you would like?
James Sage with Missoula Engineering, here to represent the applicant. With regards to the access, we actually would like to propose not paving that and actually restricting access only to emergency service vehicles through gated. The, the point being, future development plans are in place for some of the other areas of the adjacent property, so we'd like to withhold paving that. The intention in the future is obviously to pave that all. We'd like to hold off on that until a later time so that it can be one complete road, so it's not patched in together. So that was the intent of, also the intent of trying to, for condition three, potentially holding off on surfacing that until the other development plan's in place.
So I guess before we get into those specifics, is there anything else you want to just talk about more in general about the project, or not? That's, that's fine, too.
No, we, we appreciate staff's recommendations, you know, and the report that they've prepared, I believe is in line with everything that we discussed, so I don't really have any further comments to add beyond that.
Okay. Stay right there for a second. Did you have a question right away?
Yeah, I'm probably a little slow, but it sounds like you guys are saying different things that, about the gate, and you do want it, and you said that you landed on they didn't.
I was under the impression you did not want to gate it after we left off yesterday, so if that's changed since then, then it's news to me.
Yeah, ideally, we would gate it for now and leave it as a gravel access way only for emergency services, and then at a later time, remove the gate and pave the whole roadway as part of another portion of development down the road.
Okay. And I think then that the language in red surfaced in accordance with the Health Department air rigs. I don't know if they allow that type of flexibility in the air rigs, and it might be better for us to specify. I don't know the air rigs. John and Jean, you may know them better. I'm not sure there's that flexibility, so we might want to hash that out a little bit.
And something might need to be, and we can... Okay, we can, we can talk about this in more, greater detail in just a minute as far as what we need to change to allow for...
It doesn't like you, David.
If we wanted to allow for a gating option. So, before we get to that, though, this is a public hearing. Thanks, Jim. Unless you have anything else you want to share right now, you can go ahead and have a seat, and we'll, we'll probably invite you back up at some point here. But this is a public hearing, so is there any public comment on this particular proposal, the Laurent Commercial Park Buildings for Lease or Rent? Okay, I knew there would be a taker. Come on up.
Hello, Devin Jackson, Chair, Lolo Community Council. We recently did an agency review of this proposal. Unfortunately, I'm sure I'm not the first to mention the process, gives us limited time to complete an agency review, and there's only so many meetings we have. So we did not get it submitted to Casey before he was able to include it in the staff report. However, it should be in your stuff. As far as I know, we have submitted it. There were a few concerns that were raised. First, Al, we talked to both Al and Jason. They wanted to attend our meeting, but because of notification issues, nobody was able to be there to answer our questions. So we had several questions that today remain unanswered for our community. For the most part, the general stance is they want to see that area developed and develop to maximum density within our land use plan. That's the perfect place to do that. But there looks to us, as people that have done subdivision reviews before, like this proposal going for building for lease or rent as opposed to a subdivision is an attempt to avoid some of the regulations that they would have to meet had they gone through subdivision for lease or rent. They have proposed future dwelling units on the property. Right now, we're already up to 36 dwelling units. Thirty-six dwelling units under subdivision regulations require road widths of 32 feet. Their roads are 26 feet. Every cul-de-sac, or, sorry, every dead end requires a cul-de-sac or deadhead to turn around cars in, to turn around emergency vehicles. Their parking lot that feeds eight of these buildings does not have a deadhead or a cul-de-sac in it. There were, let's see, two other. The road grade of 10% is the maximum allowed road grade. Ridgeway has been allowed to go up to 12%, and at that specific spot in Ridgeway, we have accidents every year, because people can't stop at that point coming down on the ice. So, we're now going to add 36 dwelling units that are all entering right at the spot that nobody can stop. So there was a lot of concern about that, as well as the actual grade to the entrance to Ridgeway. We think it's pretty close to the 10% maximum, too. The other thing that a subdivision would require, especially with this many units, is parkland. There is no dedicated parkland in this proposal. There are future, if you look in their proposal, they even tell you what their future ideas are for future developments. That would require parkland. So by avoiding parkland here now, and then coming back later and saying, we want to add these developments, they're finding a way to get narrower roads, no parkland, and, you know, kind of beat the regulations. The other two concerns that were raised were, oh, sorry, the other one concern that was raised was school safety. raised was school safety. This project, if you can see the actual road that would go down there, this is all right next to the local school. Currently, there's drop-off above where the proposed Hobbit homes are. Students routinely walk through this area, and it would become a dedicated pathway for student traffic. So the concern was if there had been any sort of thought to both foot traffic and student safety with regards to putting this many units that close to the school. So those were the concerns that were raised at the community council meeting.
Thank you, Devin. Additional public comment? Anyone else want to comment? Yes, come on up, Jim.
I'd just like to address some of the concerns that they...
Sure.
...have issued from the Lolo Community Council. And I realize the scheduling for the building for lease or rent application was tight, and we weren't able to attend their council meeting. However, in 2017, March of 2017, we did attend a council meeting and presented a very similar development, which had very similar road widths, very similar layout, and actually had more unit density, and we didn't receive any comments at that time. With respect to the road widths, there is intention at a later date to go through a subdivision review process for the entire development as a whole. At that point, we would go through a PUD process to create narrower road widths. The intention of 32-foot road width for a subdivision typically is for access to other neighboring areas. This development is really more of a parking lot. It's not really providing access to any other neighborhoods or throughways. So 26-foot-wide road widths actually provide traffic calming and make the development safer for pedestrian traffic, which also is a concern related to the school. At this time, there are students that cross through the property. It's not currently a safe path of travel. I don't know if you guys noticed, but that hillside is steep. It was an abandoned gravel mine. Future development plans will include interconnected trails and pathways that provide better safe With regard to the approach off of Ridgeway, it will be maintained below 10%, at or below 10% in accordance with emergency service access requirements, so we will, we will meet that, that regulation. And at the time of subdivision, if this development does go forward with a subdivision later on, it would meet, you know, would be required to provide parkland or cash-in-lue or some, some form to satisfy that requirement as well. It's just not being contemplated for the building for lease or rent at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
While you're there, could you address the adequacy of space for emergency vehicles, especially fire trucks, to turn around in this plan as we're looking at it?
Yeah, so we provided a site layout showing access points to Missoula Rural Fire Department. That's, we've sent them numerous layouts with all the revisions that we've made and received their comments back, and they didn't have any issues with regard to access.
Okay.
Every parking area does provide sort of the T Hammerhead-style turnaround within a certain distance of each building to provide them access, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there additional public comment on this proposal? Come on up. Please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. Dale Oldinger. I represent Lolo School District. We are neighbors of this property, and we're, we have absolutely no administrative right or authority to review the project. We're really excited that there's something happening in our neighboring gravel pit, so the Board of Trustees just has an interest in this, and I wanted to reflect their comments because they looked through the proposal as well, just as a matter of protocol, because, of course, we're interested in what our neighbors do. As it relates to student safety, some of the trustees expressed a concern that the development might be low-income or Section 8 housing, and of course, that's not stated anywhere in this, as being a one-owner kind of thing. So that went away. The trustees also expressed a little bit of concern over the fact that the developers weren't terribly interested in bringing in families, but they respected also the developers' right to develop the property however they see fit. I wanted to relay that our Board of Trustees is hoping that in the future developments, there might be more multi-bedroom units that might be available on this property to bring more families into Lolo. But again, they were very respectful of the developers' right to develop however they see fit within the confines of what is approved. Related to student safety, we're actually kind of excited that the access that currently exists, which is illegal through the property, will be limited by this development. It's not a safe place for parents to be dropping off or picking up kids. It has become a convenience for them, and actually, by having this developed a little more appropriately, that access will be limited, which will actually improve student safety by limiting the number of access points on the campus. So where it is a concern, because some people have gotten used to that convenience, as a school district, we're, we're actually pretty happy that we've got our neighbors that are going to do something with this that will limit the inappropriate access that happens right now. So it's a blessing and a curse, but all things considered, we're glad to see that, that access to the north of the school property go away naturally. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and are there additional questions, discussion by the commission? Commissioner Rowley?
I have a question that you don't really have to answer because it is your right to put as many bedrooms as you want, but I also was curious if, if the market research indicated only one and two bedrooms were, were good, or, you know, because we do love having families in Lolo and would like to see more, more bedrooms available for people, but of course, you don't have to answer that if you don't want to. Can you come up?
Come on up to the microphone if you could. Oh, could you turn your microphone on, please?
Oh, Al Zupeda.
Thank you.
I really don't have any research that looks, really contemplates bedrooms and families. It seems to me, though, a two-bedroom could constitute a pretty good family unit. Well, I'm here.
Okay. Any questions for Al at this time? Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, I have a question for Casey. So recognizing this is not a subdivision, we are not subdividing land here, so it's a different set of regulations and state law that's applicable. If this hypothetically were a subdivision with the number of units that we're talking about, would, how would that change any, if at all, road width requirements that we'd be imposing?
Sure. So it would come in as a major subdivision. It would be within the urban area. The Lolo Water and Sewer District is considered urban area per subdivision regulations. So I would have to comply with Table 3.4.7, which...
Good memory. Okay.
Which would establish a road standard for, let's see, six to 39 lots or dwelling units. So we would have dwelling units in this case, would be, let's see, parking on one side would be a 32-foot-wide pavement width. There's, there's not a regular, or there's no indicated width for no parking, basically signifying that they need to provide parking on one side. So that would accommodate parking within the road in that 32-foot width.
Okay. Commissioner Rowley, did you have something?
No, I just wanted to kind of drive home the point that, that this is not a subdivision, and although it could be perceived as, it looks like one when you look at it on a piece of paper, although the land's not being divided, there, it is under a new and different set of regulations, and so the communities cannot expect us to put subdivision standards on it, because legally, we cannot apply subdivision standards to something that is not a subdivision.
So the take-home message there is if folks are not pleased with the standards that are at play now, your state legislators might be a recourse in terms of changing state law, but there's always unintended consequences with any legislative action, so be forewarned. Additional discussion?
I would just make the comment that Mr. Sage talked about is, in this particular case, even if it was a subdivision, they could come in and ask for a variance, and the narrower roads are traffic calming, and this is not a connector. So in a lot of ways, I mean, if somebody asked for a variance for this, I would be probably easily swayed to agree with that. So, you know, that, that's why we have some flexibility, I guess, because I don't see that this needs big, wide roads. Even though there are quite a few people, it ends up making it safer for kids and for people in the neighborhood. And I also just want to reiterate what's been said about the buildings for lease or rent. Our regulations were developed in response to changes in state law, and so nobody's trying to avoid or whatever. You know, this isn't intended to be individually owned. I guess it could be condoized in the future or something like that, but I think it's a pretty good plan.
One other question, so either for Jim or Al. I know this is not before us today, but in terms of a future subdivision, are you contemplating, I guess, condoizing or splitting up this particular chunk of land in some way, or would this remain as a unit and the subdivision would be, I think, I think I heard you say it would probably involve some other adjoining tracks?
Yeah, so the, the property to the south, as well as the property to the, the west, is also owned by Al Zupeda, and the, a future subdivision would contemplate all of, all of that development. There'd be a master plan development, and some of these units may be condo-ed as a result of that, some of them may be retained, and it would break these off into individual lots for sale. We've, we've met with caps with regard to an overall master plan development. It's not the intention to sort of hide any of that development from anybody that is the plan down the road. This buildings-for-lease-or-rent process allows the opportunity to basically raise funds to, to fund a large-scale development that he's talking about, that'd be 200 some units down the road.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, or do you want to get into the conditions of approval?
Yeah, I just wanted to have a little bit of discussion about the, if you want to put back up those conditions, the ones with three and, yeah. So, you know, I guess we could consider that, that number three, that the last sentence, read a gravel drive connecting to Highway 93 should be paved to a minimum of 20 feet wide, and you could add as an emergency access until, you know, future adjoining properties are developed or something like that, but I think the discussion needs to be, is one way in and out adequate for 38 dwelling units, so.
I would say that all the house, I don't, I don't know how many houses are up on Ridgeway, but there's one road out of there, and it's way more than these dwelling units, so I think that's probably...
I mean, the one good thing here is if there was a problem, you could run the Highway 93.
So if, if we wanted to contemplate the, the applicant's preference of gating the, the one section of the egress or ingress route, what sort of language would accomplish that?
Well, we'd be looking at a modification to that condition to essentially, the first thing would be, I would suggest changing it first to language similar to what we see here in number three, because I still can't say for sure that even if we here today say that gated and gravel, I don't know if that even still meets air quality regulations. They still may require paving on an emergency access. I can't say for sure one way or the other. Air Quality just recommended that this be paved. So at least, this would give us that it surfaced in accordance with air quality regulations, and then you would add the provision that it shall be gated, at which time it's ungated, it would need to be paved or something to that effect.
Could we add a clause in there, subject to legal review of some sort, if we're not in the position of knowing definitively today whether that would be acceptable?
I think this language leaves it open.
The way you have it here basically defers to whatever Air Quality is willing to approve. However, if you want it to be gated as well, then we would just add that provision to it and say it's, it's going to be gated, and it's going to be whatever the Air Quality Division wants in terms of surfacing.
Because I think we're only...
Air Quality Division would then know that it's not an actual utilized access, but only for emergency. That may change their opinion, and if Air Quality comes back and says, no, emergency access has to be paved, too, and we say it has to be gated, then the developer's going to have to gate a paved access, which he's probably going to want to come back and amend that, say, well, since I just paved it, might as well let people use it. That'd be my thought, but...
Right, and our intent isn't to force them to gate it if they have to pave it. It's, we're trying to allow them to gate it in lieu of paving it.
Yeah, exactly.
But you're right, I don't know if, if that is in compliance with Health Department regulations.
John, do you have, do you have any suggestions here as far, throw us a bone here? If we wanted to, I think what we're struggling to do is try to allow some flexibility such that if they gate it, that hopefully, they would not have to pave it until a later date, but we also are not positive that that's going to fly with air quality.
Yeah, I don't have a bone, Commissioner. It was, I never do, so I won't even apologize. But it wasn't clear to me, I mean, I understand that there wasn't necessarily a meeting of the minds about the, the, you know, concerning yesterday's meeting, but it also wasn't clear to me if the language that's in red on condition three is adequate to address the developers' concerns and that, and that we could, that, that language in itself would accommodate everybody's concerns, but maybe it is, maybe it doesn't, and I, but it wasn't clear to me.
So I guess I would consider that if we're going to leave the red language in there, that we add to that sentence as an emergency access until future adjoining properties are developed, and then another sentence that say it must be gated if not paved.
It also doesn't have to be just an emergency access if it is paved, though.
True.
The point that they have to pave it, people would use it, right?
Well, what I'm trying to say is that if it's gravel, it's an emergency access. If it gets paved, it doesn't have to be, yeah. I might not have said that.
Correct. So I, I do think, my sense is the language in red right now is, at least by, as far as the developer's concerned, would not be adequate to accomplish the goal of avoiding paving right now. We'd need to tack something on there related to gating until such a time as it's no longer an emergency access, at which point it would be paved. Casey, did you?
Well, and you could just say that it shall be paved or gated for emergency access only if not paved.
So you'd take out gravel in that sentence and just say the drive connecting shall be surfaced? And it...
Well, no, it would say it shall be paved unless gated, because then if they gate it, then it doesn't, the Air Quality Division may allow it to be gravel, and that's up to them. So it's either paved or gated, and if it's gated, they can do whatever surface they need to do, as long as it's 20 feet wide.
And that's still, it's still an open-ended question whether air quality would, that would fly with them?
Yeah, it's still open-ended, but it, it gives them that flexibility to have the either-or option. You can either pave it and allow use or gate it and do whatever you're required to do.
Cola? Did you? No? Okay.
I still think if you're going to say that, though, you take the word gravel out of there, so it would say, the drive connecting to Highway 93 shall be surfaced in accordance with the Health Department regulations to a minimum, I don't know, it probably needs to be different.
Or can we say surfaced in accordance with those regs to a minimum of 20 feet wide or gated?
Or gated, but I think we want to, at least keep, 20 feet wide is looked at by the Fire Department as the minimum access. We want to make sure that, I don't know, there's the gravel drive there, I don't know what the specs are on it, so we want to make sure it's brought up to at least a...
Okay, so we could say the drive connecting Highway shall, shall be brought up to a minimum of 20 feet wide and paved or gated?
I think that would accomplish it.
Did someone write that down? Mr. Zupeda or Jim, do you have any thoughts on the language that we're discussing right
I, I think Casey has a correct interpretation as far as, you know, if it's gravel, then it has to be gated. If it's, if it's paved, then it, then the gate can be removed. And regardless of whatever happens here, it has to meet the air quality standards.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you.
Want to type out a motion?
So that first sentence has...
Okay, Casey, could you take a stab at typing out the language for a motion?
Anything else we want to talk about while he does that?
So it sounds like for condition six, seven, and nine, there was some meeting of the minds there and no modifications necessary.
Let him type. He's thinking. The first sentence right after Health Department, I think that floor doesn't need to be there. Right?
Correct.
Okay, a paving permission. They actually do a paving permit?
That's my understanding of it. I apologize. I don't know the whole ins and outs of the air quality regulations.
At the end, should we, should we say paved or gated for emergency access in accordance with Health Department regs or whatever? So that indicates that that's the decision factor, because we don't know what's legal as per the air quality regs?
Well, I guess the consideration there would be coming back that if, for some reason, air quality says, "Oh, actually, they can do gravel and allow full access through it." Do we, are we saying that, that there's any impact to, you know, through this review that it should be paved for the residents of this development if they're going to utilize it? So that's a consideration as well, that there is some level of review outside of just the Health Department where, you know, there could be something more stringent here that comes up through the, the findings of this hearing.
Because everybody that's going to turn right onto 93 is going to use this road.
I presume it'd be much quicker, yeah.
Yeah, if it, yeah.
John, did you have something you wanted to say? A second ago? No, okay. Commissioner Rowley?
So the consensus is to leave it as is, and this is the motion? You think that's the best we can?
I, I think this motion accomplishes, if you're trying to allow that flexibility there for gating it, then, you know, this, this would get them there.
Okay. And then just one housekeeping item. On page five, number 20, it says, "No comments were received from the Lolo Community Council." And we did receive them, although it was after-agency comments. So could we amend that to indicate that?
Yeah, well, and we can include that in the findings that the Lolo Community Council submitted the comments and...
Thanks.
Okay, so do we need a motion to amend condition number three?
I would amend condition number three to read, "A paving permit shall be obtained from the air quality division of the Health Department prior to paving. The gravel drive connecting to Highway 93 shall be a minimum of 20 feet wide and paved or gated for emergency access." Second?
Is there any public comment on this amended motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
And I would move to...
Was that an aye or no?
Oh, it's an aye.
Oh, okay, sorry, okay. That was unanimous.
And I would move to amend, or not condition, the findings, number 20, referring to the Lolo Community Council, to reflect their comment. Second?
Any further discussion on that? All in favor? Aye. Okay, are we on to the main motion?
I would move that the Laurent Commercial Park Buildings for Lease or Rent project on Lot 3 of Certificate Survey 2876, as represented in the applicant packet and modified by Attachment F, be approved based on the findings of fact and conclusion of law found in the staff report, subject to the, subject to conditions of approval as amended. Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, it is approved. Thanks, Casey.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks, everyone who came out to comment today. I hope you found this a pleasant experience in the Missoula County Courthouse, Room 151. Is there any other business to come before the commission at this time? Seeing none, we will be adjourned.